Hi.
We are live on Facebook and recording now, just FYI.
Okay, I'll call this council work session to order, January 6th, the time is 1:00 PM. Foremost, I will open it up for visitor comments. If you have any comments, you can raise your hand and we will see you. And allow you to speak. Please keep your talks to five minutes. Yeah, I'm looking at participants.
You're not seeing anyone, Mayor?
I do not see anyone either. Let's just give them a little bit longer. Okay. I'm not seeing no one. All right. Next item on our agenda, we're gonna take a break, take a break at approximately 3:00 PM. So. Are we gonna go ahead and do the, do we have a video of the presentation, the swearing in? Are we gonna go ahead and do that and show that at our meeting here?
I think that was the plan. I had a minute of an LP this evening, but we're working on it right now again.
Okay.
Put it together.
All right. So yes, if you'd like to comment and congratulate anybody, please join in later this evening. I would like to welcome Counselor Berkeley and Counselor Chilton. To City Council. So we're gonna get on with this meeting though, because this is a work session and that's what we do here. We do a lot of work. So. The first item on our agenda is Police Station Advocate Ad Hoc Committee Presentation. And I see that we have Chris Iverson and George Dunkle here, so.
Give me one second to get their videos started.
Yeah.
Where's Chris? And Mayor, you should see a PowerPoint presentation.
I am.
Okay, so I'm gonna quickly go through as a kind of an update for the two new City Council members that we have. I know they're are. Maybe familiar with the project that we've been working on right now with the committee, but I wanted to go through a quick overview of what we've done thus far. And then I will hand it over to Chris and George to leave the recommendation from the committee.
That sounds good, Matt.
So as most of you probably know, our current police facility was originally built in 1971. So it is almost fifty years old now. It's about twenty-two hundred square feet, which is smaller than many homes these days. And there are a number of failures that we have been able to meet with our current facility that we have. And if you want more specific information on that, I would invite Brian Greenway to come in and talk about that if you would like him to add some time during this presentation. So. Our new facility that we are looking at doing. Is approximately twenty-two thousand square feet based on a needs assessment that was done by a third-party architecture firm that specializes in public safety facilities. That was McKenzie Architecture. And so we added a number of opportunities like community rooms. We've also included moving municipal court. Over to the public safety building as well as having that building as a potential for council chambers. When looking at the facility, we did look at a number of sites, ten in total around the city. That was a combination of property that was owned by the city as well as properties not owned by the city. And so from that list of ten. Staff, internal staff, McKenzie Architecture, and as well as the City Council weighed in on what should be our top choice. It was selected as the industrial site number two. That is formerly kind of where the big pile of dirt is, if you can see that in the community. So a few of the deciding factors on here was that the city already owns the property. We found that this is a potential savings of upwards of seven-hundred-and-fifty to anywhere of a million dollars plus of having to buy property that's needed for the size of building. Because we own the industrial park and almost all the land around that area, the opportunity for expansion is there as well. The, this was the first choice for all the police officers when we did some internal polling. It's also the first choice of staff recommendation and as well, one of the big things for a police station was access to Highway thirty. This is a site plan of what the building would look like. It shaded in the blue area. The public parking is off of Castor Road, so you would turn right onto Castor Road and then take a left on what is right now an existing right-of-way into the public parking space. And then further back, you can see all of the secured parking area as well as parking spots for the employees that work at the facility as well. Should notice well that we, and particularly around the frontage of the old Portland Road, wanted to signify some public plaza space. So this gray area is technically could be used as a roadway. But we wanted to kind of help encourage. Kind of outflow for events that may happen at that place. Some of our public meetings can be large enough where our current council chambers is not large enough. So. The capacity to expand and kind of open the doors from the council room that is on the corner here. Where the municipal court would be is an opportunity for this public plaza to be used in that fashion and some other opportunities as well. This is a general floor plan of the building, so you can see toward the bottom of the screen, the nine-one-one vestibule. That is something that when we went on tours, that has been pretty popular around a number of the stations that have been built. If you don't know what that is, it's basically a secured room that if somebody is chasing you or following you. You have the ability twenty-four hours a day to go into this vestibule, hit a button, it locks the doors behind you, and you have a direct access to nine-one-one communications. Who can talk with you or connect you with an officer in the event that that is needed. So. You have a front lobby area, the kind of blue areas in the floor plan are kind of the general use municipal court areas. Purple is designated to be more police functions. And then we have a green room signifying the K-nine units as well as the evidence storage and hard interview rooms. That are also another police function. And Brian, Chief Greenway, can go into more questions if you have them. I'm just kind of doing a general overview of the building and I'm always happy to take questions as well as anybody else on staff that can answer questions as well. We did have McKenzie Architecture put together a rendering of what the building could look like when it is finished. So that is the picture that you see there. Notice the doors on the kind of the front left corner there, that's where it would open up to the public plaza area for the council chambers and municipal courtroom that would be right behind these glass windows. So when we talked to the ad hoc committee, it was specifically about funding strategies for this building. And we looked at two main categories, and that one is a general obligation bond. A few things, if you're unfamiliar with how general obligations are go-bonds, a few characteristics we wanted to make you aware of is that. Bond, this bond must be approved by voters. It does increase your property taxes. These, this bond is limited to only construction costs. There is, there was a discussion at the ad hoc committee and Chris and George can talk about this as well, about user disparity. That means when you, we get into a couple of slides here, you'll see that, but basically higher assessed value homes are paying more, although they may not be using the services of police as much. So renters may not directly contribute. Obviously, you're all familiar with that. We have a very large rental. Rental properties in this area, so they may not directly contribute, although they may be one of the more heavy users of police services. And then there also is an impact to other jurisdictions. We all have an avenue of bonds for funding. We've seen that with the county, with fire districts and any other districts that are out there, but the more we put on property taxes, taxpayers, the more, less opportunity other jurisdictions have to use that. So and then on the general obligation bonds, we did look at a twenty-year option and a thirty-year option. So the second option that we looked at is what we refer to as a public safety fund. And a few characteristics, like we also did look at a twenty-year and a thirty-year for comparison rates on this. Couple of characteristics I would just want to make you familiar with. This does not affect property taxes. It does allow more flexibility in what the city can use this funding for. It is voter optional approval, so you as a council could make, could have an option to send this out to the voters if you wanted to. With the city and how it's growing, just in what we've seen these last couple of years and the expected growth over the next five, ten years, there is a potential that whatever rate you may set. Say if it was this year that you set this rate. When there's more homes, there's more development, there's more growth, there's more opportunity to spread that cost out in a public safety fund model. So the cost may actually decrease depending on how large the city grows. Renters directly contribute because this is a fee that is placed on the utility bill. And then I was gonna hand it over to John for a few minutes just to talk about some of the options for user-based models. John, did you want to talk for a couple of minutes about some of the options?
Yeah, sure, Matt. The. First of all, compliment to Matt Brown and to Chief Greenway for really picking us up and carrying the ball. The notion of having a new station, Chris Iverson on our selection committee was talking that when he was on council twenty years ago, this was a topic of getting, replacing the existing inadequate facility then, so. There's been a lot of work on this and it's basically overdue and it's not a matter of, you know, if we should replace it. It's and how, especially to meet our needs of our growing community, so. You know, essentially, we have, you know, two ways to fund it. One's ways a property tax-based model, one's user-based model. Those. Those have different impacts as Matt described. The, the user-based. Model would potentially be, we've talked about it, it is EDU or equivalent dwelling units or per-residence might be another, other way to frame that. So you had to have each resident pay a fixed amount of revenue towards, towards that fee than the non-residential, your commercial properties. They'll come, commercial, industrial-type businesses. We come up with another rate that, that adequately assess them for their, you know, their ability to pay this back and. You know, Matt, I think you already talked about the tax part of it as far as, you know, higher property values pay more and maybe you don't use it as much.
Yeah, and John, if I can help you, I'm gonna move to the next slide because I think this will help a little bit of the discussion. And by no means are, and I want to be clear that we are not asking you to make a decision today. And so we understand this is a big decision, but we wanted to lay out some of the groundwork along, along with receiving the recommendation from the committee. We looked at a couple of funding scenarios of how much this would cost a potential person who lives in the community. And looking at a new public safety facility, you have the top bar with the two-fifty, three-hundred, that is the assessed value of a home. Which as most people probably know, but I want to be clear that assessed value and market value are two very different things. So. A three-hundred-thousand-dollar assessed home on a thirty-year bond could potentially be looking at paying thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents a month. If we went with a public safety fund model, and as John mentioned, there are multiple ways that we could look at this, whether it is one flat fee for everyone. Whether it is a flat fee for residential customers and a different flat fee for commercial, industrial. John mentioned an estimated dwelling unit, that is how our sewer is, is calculated as well on utility bills. So. There are a number of different ways that we could look at doing a public safety fund. And by no means am I prepared today to go through on kind of a deeper dive on that. I think we anticipate that happening at the next January or February meeting. If you would like to move forward with this. So as I mentioned earlier, we did look at a twenty-year bond as well, and you have those potential monthly costs. To a homeowner at that rate, and then the twenty-year public safety fund model. Which is along the same lines of the thirty-year safety model. So I wanted to at least give you some framework and ideas for cost. This is definitely something that is not written in stone. There are a lot of factors that help determine what these rates are. Including market rates, which could potentially change in six to twelve months drastically, so. I just want to make you aware of that. And I would like to now hand it over to Chris and George. They were the chair and vice chair. For the ad hoc committee, and I wanted to at least note all the ad hoc committee members and the variety of members that we had. We specifically sought out business owners. Current members of commissions, local business owners, residents at large, any kind of group or so. We tried to encompass a large enough group. That we covered all of our bases, and I think we did an exceptionally well job at attracting. This membership group, and I wanted to acknowledge all of those that participated in. So Chris and George, are you ready to take it over?
I think Chris is gonna take the lead. Is he there? Can you hear me, Matt?
Yeah, I can hear you, George.
Okay. Where's my leader?
Well, 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 Chris is coming online there. One point I wanted to make further. Was that we are in a really favorable climate either way, as far as interest rates are really at historic lows or, or bond rates, either on a taxation rate or other model to. Help paper a station. So, but we've been, you know, well overdue and should have had a station long ago. You know, interest is on our side at this point, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, again.
I was sitting here talking away and I was essentially talking to myself, I guess, so. Tech, technology is a wonderful thing, but yeah, George, feel free to jump in whenever you want. I'll, I'll start the ball rolling on this, and if I miss something or, or you'd like to add something, please feel free to jump in anytime. I, I think the first point that was made, that was just made, that just kind of hit me right in the middle of the head. On a needs basis is the engineering firm that was hired is recommending a facility that's ten times the size of the facility that you currently have. If there, if that doesn't say that there's a real need for this facility, then I don't know what does. You have a growing community that. Has been growing by leaps and bounds, but the services in some cases have not kept up, and this is one of those cases. We were. Remiss when, as John said, twenty, twenty-five years ago, when I was on the city council, I wish we would have pushed this harder and made that. Made that facility a priority at that time, but we didn't do it, and now it's kind of fallen into you guys' lap. But overall, the committee, I don't remember one comment that was opposed to a new facility. Everybody that saw this. Or went through it, came up with the same conclusion. There needs to be a new facility. And George, do you have any other comments on, on a needs?
No, I think that's important point. The council, which I appreciate being on this committee and I appreciate council appointment. We had a very diverse group of members and it was quite a large committee. And the one thing we all rallied around was the need. Many people toured the existing facility. Of course. I had kind of an intimate relationship with it for my years of being, working in the community. So I really knew a lot about it, but the people that toured it all came back with the same comment that the need is definitely there. So. The council is gonna have an easy time sharing with the community that, the need for improvements in a facility for law enforcement. And, and I like the design this has been come up with because there's really, there's some diversity in how that building can be used. Primarily as for law enforcement, but you know, you look at it from the council chambers in, in some situations and or possibly other public meetings. So that's a good thing.
The second issue I think that, that we talked about was the siding of the, of the facility. I, I don't think there's a lot to be said about that. There. The, the site that was chosen down there on Castor Road and, and old Portland Road right on the corner. It just made the most sense out of every site that was identified, and I'm sure that the council will come to the same conclusion if they look at that. I. I don't remember any conversations where people were opposed to that or thought maybe one site was better than another one. This one, you guys already own it. There, it's, it's fairly centrally located. Good access in several directions. It just makes sense that you guys not go out and purchase the site and, and utilize the site that you have. George, any other additional comments on that?
Nothing. And, and the staff did an excellent job with that. I mean, the work done by the, by staff and their vendors, you might say, in selecting the site was excellent. We were given the material, shared with us, and, and we're in concurrence with staff.
The, the next issue is funding, and, and that's an issue that, you know, it's never an easy issue when you're asking people for more money. But once again, I don't know how you can have a city that continues to grow and have services that aren't keeping up, and it just makes sense that sooner or later, you're, you're going to have to. Do something to increase your, your police department and increase, increase the facilities they use. I'm gonna let George talk a little bit more about this. Unfortunately, I had a scheduling conflict in the last meeting, so I didn't get to hear all the comments. George did chair that meeting, and so I'd like to hear what George had to say.
Yeah, I think, you know, Chris, the council sees the, basically the six alphabetical, I call them bullets, but. That the committee reached consensus on, and not only reached consensus, took, took active votes and enthusiastically supports the recommendation. The only debate we really had and were kind of, for lack of a better term, we're kind of passing it on to the council because we think it needs more discussion. Is the whole thing about the funding when it comes to, is it a fixed base or an EDU-based? I think staff has even done some great work since our committee finished its work in looking at ways that that can be implemented gradually over time or as need hits. But as you'll see in our recommendation, we do believe that the best way to go is with some type of a, a public safety. Utility fund or whatever you want to, the public safety fund, but that it be an administrative action by the, by the council on actually determining how that's going to be implemented.
And I, I think one of the other things that I'd like to add to that is, I, I, the overall feeling that I got in the discussions that we did have is, is the committee. Thought it would be okay that the council vote on this as long as there was adequate time for public input. That there was, you know, the public had a, had ample time and opportunity to give input to the council on, on costs and things like that. I, I don't. I don't remember anybody being. Really opposed to the council making that decision themselves.
No, not at all. In fact, you know, it sounds like we're passing the buck, but that's where it needs to be made. It was gonna be made anyway. You know, we're, we're making a recommendation. This is, is open for council. Debate and dialogue, and that's appropriate. But I think when you look down these items here, Chris, if I could just back up a little bit. It was really important to the committee that there, that there be a real robust community engagement period. Even after you make a decision that this is the right thing to do, that there be an opportunity for staff, law enforcement people, and even maybe possibly members of the committee that are out there. Working with the community until they understand that, that there is a true need and, and the fair way to fund this is over a long-term period, you know, with some type of a fee. And the other thing that's included in this is that since the city does have some, you might say some. An inventory of property that the sale of the current police station, once the new facility is done, may be a very good way to help reduce the debt. By being able to put that piece of property back on the tax rolls. And, and for sale of the city. So that's something that we included in that.
And also, also grants, explore every grant that you can explore. You know, and, and we encouraged, I'm remembering early on encouraging, talking to other police departments that have just gone through this and see what the good things they did, that they would do again, and what the bad things that they, they did that didn't work well. So, but overall, the, the support for this process was overwhelming, I thought.
I support that.
Anyway, but I, unless there's questions for us, I think we turn it back over to Matt and. Get his input.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I see half a city hall and half a police station. We absolutely need both, big time. The question is, should we enlarge this a little bit more or a lot more to have a total city hall, police station combination? Or should we get rid of the city hall part of this? And I would, I've got some thoughts about actually enlarging the police station and think about building a new city hall. That's a philosophy change. The other thing is, are there any agencies that. Collect the list of grants that could be for public safety? I mean, from homeland security on through, or I mean, the idea would be to hire them or have them do the footwork to get grants, because I'm sure for public safety and things like that, there should be federal. Grants. I'm not sure about state grants, but there should be federal grants for public safety.
I can touch on that a little bit, and I see, I see Counselor Martin raises hands too, and I'm gonna touch on Topaz's thoughts and then. Hopefully continue the discussion. As far as city hall is concerned, I'm. Unclear, Counselor Topaz, if you are referring to the council chambers. And the municipal courts, do you disagree that they should not be combined in the facility, or are you asking? For just a larger facility for everyone in one place?
I need a larger facility for everybody. The building that we have downtown is a nice museum, but it's not publicly accessible for ADA. It's, it's antiquated. Face it, it's antiquated. It's a pretty building, but it's antiquated.
Yeah.
So either you gotta make a decision, we need a separate one, or if you want your city hall facilities in the same building, you need a bigger building. Not half and half. Don't try to smudge it up. Either go for it one way or go for it the other way.
Correct, and I, and I think we at least did entertain the option early on. That was actually one of the key factors in choosing that lot for the police station is the potential expansion. Across the way from the right-of-way as a separate building. We never did talk about having the building as an all-in-one police court building, planning everything all-in-one. Thought that public safety needed its own space. It could be combined with municipal court because there are a lot of interactions there. But we never did discuss about doing an all-in-one building. But it could be an expansion down the road on that property.
If you had to plan for that, that would be the same as doing as right now. I mean, just clearing the air of where we're going with the other need.
Correct.
The real question.
Great, and I do want to also mention about the grants. We have been constantly looking for grants. There are some USDA grants that we thought we could be able to get. There is some low-interest loans that we could do. Unfortunately, the city of St. Helens doesn't quite meet the characteristics of a low-income community to get grants from the USDA. There is some funding options that one of our staff people, Rachel Berry, is looking into as far as some additional funding from the legislature or. Some different avenues, looking at emergency operations center. This building was also designed as a backup ELC center for Columbia County. And whether those discussions move forward as far as it becoming a main ELC, that could potentially help with some of the funding because we would be. Able to potentially receive grant funds to be an emergency operations center. Now, there's obviously the other side of that is that we have to share the building with Columbia County or a portion of the building for their operations. As an emergency operations center, currently they're in a trailer across from St. Helens School District, so. From high school where public health is right now, so. But we can, through doing the public safety fund, that is one of the key characteristics of that. We can still continue to look for grants as we're still going through this building process.
Matt, could I speak to the federal grants real quick?
Yeah.
So we have a deadline of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one for the St. Helens Police Department. To submit, to get grant funding under the Presidential Order on Safe Policing and Safe Community Act. Unfortunately, part of the application process is that the police departments have to be accredited or in the process of becoming accredited to be considered for this federal grant funding. And we're in a catch-22 because the St. Helens Police Department, it was already spoke to ad nauseam that we, we need new facility, but we, we can't even pass accreditation standards with our current facility. So we do not qualify for this grant funding. Now, if we were to, you know. Get a new station, obviously, we'd be back in the running, but, so that, along those lines, I did some research, and I don't know if that would bleed over. and I don't know if that would bleed over into building a facility, this Presidential Order on Safe Policing and Safe Community, but that is a factor is that what we have now, we don't even qualify to receive some grants out there because we don't meet accreditation standards. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that as well.
Councilor Topaz, did that answer some of your questions that you had?
That answer, I was hoping that there was some government agency that had a list of anybody with grants, mainly having them do more of the legwork on the grants and possibilities. And, you know, we can do some of it, but there are people who are better at it because that's all they do. I was hoping we could get some outside help on grant search. And I'd sure use the fact that we are not accredited to find money so we could get accredited, even if it means building a new building. Use that as a lever to get more money.
And and I will say, it's it's definitely something on the list. It's something we've also talked with a number of agencies that have just recently built public safety facilities or police stations. And most of their funding strategies were either loans or I think the most kind of side way to fund a police station was Lincoln City, and they use their transient room fee tax. They obligated to pay a portion, pay those fees towards a new police station. But every facility that we looked at, we toured about six or seven ones around the state of Oregon. They were all funded through either bonds or Oregon City, which just completed their police facility. They did theirs through a utility fee, just like we are, or the ad hoc committee has recommended to the city council. Councilor Morton, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I do. And one of the first things I want to do is just thank the the committee for doing such a tremendous thorough job with their with what they had to to work with. And I just appreciate what they have all done and their recommendations. With that, thank you. And this comes from the council. And I I I'm very encouraged. One of the things in process, however, is is that we can't forget about our budget committee, can we? Our budget committee is going to, I think this is timely for that, because as our budget committee meets it in the near future, this will certainly be an agenda item, and this will certainly be discussed as as how we're going to deal with with our with our upcoming budgets. I just wanted to say that for the record so that we have we have, we have all our Ps and Qs underlined and in order so that we aren't leaving anything out in process. The other thing I wanted to mention is Councilor Topaz's recommendation, a kind of a philosophical recommendation putting a our city hall and our police station under one roof. You know, in a in a long run, that really makes a lot of sense, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And in particularly, the the monetary gains that we would ascertain from the existing city hall one way or the other could help accommodate those things, whether there's all kinds of property issues that need to be discussed in doing that, and that can be part of the funding as well. It's 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 a good idea. It's very insightful. We've talked a lot about that before. We talked about even moving into the old school and doing those kinds of things, and we weren't quite ready for that. But now, this brings up a a new thought and a philosophical thought that starts to make a lot of sense. One of the things that back again, coming back to the committee, you've got you folks were very insightful for picking this spot in terms of expansion. Because who knows? Who knows what this becomes kind of may possibly a nucleus? It's a beautiful architectural statement as as we move into our city on Old Portland Road, McCormick Park, the rec center, it's it's going to be a a central very central intersection. So yeah, again, kudos. So this is, these are philosophical talks that I think that we can talk about in a in the future about possibly a phase two for that kind of endeavor. But certainly, I would think it might be a little it might be a little too much to take at this time, and I don't know if Councilor Topaz agrees on that or not. I'd just like to see this go forward with public support and get it get moved in, whether we could call it phase one or whatever, but we should have, we need to know that we have as a thought process, a future expansion for our our city outreach. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. I do want to mention too that on the committee, you mentioned about budget committee members, and I we do have one budget committee member that was part of the committee, Michelle Damas, who's on the budget committee, as well as we had two commissioners from the Planning Commission, Jennifer Pugsley and Russ Hubbard, that sat on the committee as well.
Right.
Yeah, Councilor Chilton, I think, had a next stand.
Thank you. I also want to say that I'm super excited about the police station. I think it's well needed, and I think our citizens echo it. So I think everyone's on board with that. I did have one question, though, in regards to, I think you called it the utility fee. So we're gonna, so residents can expect to see if we choose this option and increase on their water bill or their utility bill, or what does that look like?
Yes, so depending on which method is chosen, whether it's a 30 year or 20 year repayment schedule, and we can go in between, there's options as well if we want to look at a 25 or 27 year. Usually, we try not to go above 30 years. But depending on how what method is chosen to place that fee onto utility bills, that will determine what the cost is. So we've done some preliminary numbers that could start as low as doing a interest only payments for a few years, and that could be $6 or $7 per month. And then when the payments actually start, it could jump, go up anywhere from, you know, $8 to $15, depending on how fast and what the repayment schedule is. There are a lot of options that, once we kind of dig into the weeds a little bit, we can come back to city council with those options. We do have our financial advisors here. If you want to talk with them directly and have them just kind of give you some ideas or some feedback, I can invite them to to join in and give their comments. We have Duncan Brown from PFM, who's a financial advisor for organizations like cities. And then we also have a representative, Jonas from DA Davidson, who actually helped us in refinancing our bonds that we just finished just a few months ago for refinancing a lot of our utility debt. So I'm going to actually ask them to unmute themselves, Duncan and Jonas, if you'd like to unmute yourself and start your video. There's Duncan, no relation to me. Has the same last name, but different mothers. Duncan, did you want to comment on Councilor Chilton's questions?
Sure. Thanks, Matt. Again, Duncan Brown with with PFM. We are the city's independent financial advisor, and we we work with cities and municipalities throughout the Northwest on capital projects and and bond issues. I think the 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 utility fee is sort of the the beauty of that approach or the the surcharge or whatever it's it's deemed is that it's very flexible. And so the surcharge or fee could be imposed for for whatever period of time is 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 really at the council's discretion. And could be used both to pay debt service on on full faith and credit debt issued by the city and also to for other purposes that the council may designate, such as capital repair and replacement or things of that nature. It could be, it could start off small and grow, or it could start off at one level and stay the same. It's 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 really quite flexible in a way that I think general obligation bonds and property taxes are not.
I have a quick question. The question is, you can tax a household, one household, seven people, three people. If you attack, we say, the sewerage bill, everybody gets to use the sewer. So the higher the sewer bill, the higher your tax rate or taxes are. But it also kind of is parallel to the possibility, the more people in that house, the possibility of causing more trouble for the police. What are the limits on, we say, adjustable rates per household? Or are there any?
I don't think we require reporting of how many people live in a household.
No, but your sewer rates do.
The student, well, no, actually, the sewer rates are based on estimated dwelling units. So that means if it's a single family resident, there may be 20 people living in the home, but it's one dwelling unit. Whereas the Armstrong property and other larger industrial commercial properties are based on impervious service. So depending on how much pavement you have, how big your parking lot is, that determines the rate of your sewer portion of your utility bill.
Well, when my, okay, use my water bill, the more water I use, which calibrates the more people.
Well, that calibrates into our into our raw sewage into our raw sewage bill. The the amount of water you use depends on our the the raw sewage statement.
Correct. The the amount of water you use is helps determine what your average monthly sewer bill that gets adjusted once a year, usually around this time or a couple of months ago, where we actually adjust your your winter average is what we refer to it as.
And I just want to remind everybody that Councilor Berkeley has been having his hand raised to mute it off the side.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Berkeley, I you had your video turned off, so I didn't see you. So, yeah, I don't think we have a way, Councilor Topaz, to have people who have 10 people living in a building versus two people. The best avenue, if you wanted to go that route, would be similar to an estimated dwelling unit charge.
It's your turn, Pat.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I still learning how to use this iPad thing and turned my video off. So and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing that. I don't want to liken the city council to a class of kindergarteners, but being a kindergarten teacher who teaches online. I I I I'm trying, I'm trying to to follow the model by raising my hand and and waiting my turn. Anyway, maybe that's not the best way to start my 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 term on the the council. Bringing that up. Anyway, thank, but thank you. So I do appreciate, first of all, the great work of the advisory committee. And by no means do I think that you're passing the the buck by not making a decision on the the means of funding. I guess that's what we signed up for. And and ultimately is our decision. So but I do really appreciate the the insights that you have 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 brought about that. So just a couple of thoughts, and I know we'll discuss this more and and more. I think right now, one thing we the city needs to look at is, I believe it's this year that we were going to look at a permanent funding source or solution for our recreation program, which we do now fund through a fee on the util, or on the utility bill. So I think that if we are going to consider funding the the new facility using that same source, that's something we're going to certainly have to take into consideration. Making sure that we're making decisions regarding the recreation program. And then also looking at ways to, yeah, really making sure that we can be flexible, especially for the possible impact on residents who may have financial concerns and and struggles to pay their their utility fees. So I think that would just, I think, be important. And I do echo the the, I think, the Councilor Morton's thought that yes, it's, I'm glad that we did have a budget committee member on this ad hoc committee, but that I think this would be a good topic along with some of these other funding issues when we do approach the the budget process. I think tonight's on the agenda, I think, to appoint Matt as our budget officer, and we have to gear up to that. But I I do hope that the the budget committee, you know, is is involved in in that discussion. I want to also affirm, I think, the idea of building a facility that perhaps could be expanded. The Columbia Center, which is houses the the library right now, when it was first constructed, was designed in such a way that it could be easily added on to that north, the wing on the north, which houses the library on the west, west end. I understand was designed in such a way that there could easily be a some kind of addition. So I think designing a building with some kind of flexibility for possible expansion in that same area would be good to think about. And oh, and concerning Chief Greenway's comments too about accreditation. Oh, and I want, and I do want to thank Chief Greenway, again, this summer, when I was running for office, I had the opportunity to 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 talk with the chief for about an hour and a half at the facility. And even though I worked across the street from it for a number of years, had never been in it. And, yeah, there's, there's no doubt that our officers, our department, need a new facility. And I'm hoping that this might be even a way we can recruit and retain officers for our community. If we have a world-class facility from which they were working, might be a a means of attracting attracting and retaining our our officers. So I just, again, want to thank the the committee. I know we'll have a lot more discussions. I hope too that, once the the city council does make a decision either way, that members of the ad hoc committee will feel free to continue to be engaged in the process. And the public outreach, I think, Mr. Iverson, you really emphasized that. The public outreach is going to be so key at every every moment. And so I like the idea of, you know, the initial dialogue, ongoing polling, or whatever it takes, we have to have our community on board. So just thank you for good work.
Council Berkeley, I did want to mention, one of the recommendations that is from the committee is to increase funding for utility assistance programs. I'm gonna share my screen here just for a second to go back to the presentation and the recommendation. But number C is increased funding for utility assistance programs. Currently, the city of St. Helens gives a portion of its late fees that we collect from utilities to community action team, and that is for direct support for people that are in need, whether that be senior citizens, low income, job loss, any scenario that is liable. We push everybody to community action team because that's what they do. And so we do support and support our residents through that program. And so the committee did suggest looking for a utility assistance program specifically for the fee if there are citizens or somebody that can't, really cannot afford that $7 or $15 or $20 or whatever it may be. But to increase funding for that program, for that particular particular.
Thank you for reminding. I remember seeing that bullet point and and all, but thank you for, again, bringing it to to my, appreciate it.
Yep. I did want to mention just this last slide of kind of the next steps. And what staff would like to come back to you, city council members, is at the next January meeting, is an official resolution of accepting and acknowledging the work of the ad hoc committee. And then on the January 20th meeting, we would like to have another discussion revisiting the ad hoc committee's recommendations and having a more direct dialogue of what a community engagement period would consist of, how long it is, what items we should be doing, and those kind of avenues. And that's what staff would like to recommend as its next steps, if that is okay with council.
Yes, well, it's okay with me. The other counselors. Chime in, please. Unmute yourself, chime in.
See.
It's a good go there, Rick.
Topaz, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And and Mayor, if I could ask for just a few more minutes, I know we have a lot of committee members that And, and Mayor, if I could, um, ask for just a few more minutes, um, I know we have a lot of committee members that are on this meeting today. And if you're okay with that, I would like to have, give them an opportunity to speak about their time on the committee and their thoughts.
Sure, I just wanted to have a word though, too, I just wanted to think.
I'm sorry.
But I think, I think you know where I stand, so you probably, you know, you've heard where I stand, I stand with the committee. That the need is greater than, um, than, if you go look at the old police station, it's just a need. The risk between going for a bond and just say implementing a fee. There's too much of a need to take that, um, we are a city. Uh, our census, my population, there are two hundred and forty-one incorporated cities in Oregon. We are number forty, so we're not a small city by any means, really. Um, when you look at it in that perspective, and, uh, a, a fifty-year-old station. And it's very, very small, and, uh, we, you know, we've had to add a mobile unit. A recycled mobile unit just to, to try to make it at least adequate, and it's still not. So, um, and I think anybody on the committee that did tour the facility realized that, and I appreciate their time, I did listen in on their. Conversation, and I know there was a lot of discussion, I tried not to chime in, but I did a little bit, and, uh. And I apologize for that, but, uh, I, I really appreciate, um, um, them with their recommendation to the council. That's all I got, so now if you'd like to, uh, go ahead and invite some of the members to share.
Jerry Cummings was one who's already chatted with me about. Um, talking, and if there are any other members that are on here that would like to speak to the city council. Please raise your hand or shoot me a chat message or text me.
Hi, Matt, can you hear me?
This is Judy.
Hi, guys, hi, everyone, um, I, it was an honor to sat on this, uh, participate on this ad hoc committee and. And, uh, I, I, just for years, I mean, we've all known, we need a new police station, and this was. So, it, it was just, the timing is great, the growth of our community, um, I, and everybody on the committee was so. Uh, the conversations were great and concern about impact it would have on, uh, every, our whole population from. The little guy to the big guy, small business, big business, uh, you know, residents and how, how this was going to be funded, and there was. Like everyone has said, there's no question, we do need this, and, and to prepare for the growth that we have coming and is happening, and, and to try. And be prepared for that and keep and attract officers, all of it, and the last committee meeting. Uh, you know, I, that we had, all my questions were answered as the, the whole, um, evening went along, and I was like, wow. Everybody's thinking along the same lines, so it was, it was really cool, and I'm happy to see this progress, and we're gonna make it happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Jerry?
Yes, Matt, I don't have a lot to add to that, really, it was an honor to serve on this committee, I, um, you know. I would say I enjoyed my tour of the police facility, but it was, um, actually rather disheartening. You know, our, our police force are fantastic, but they're, you know, I, honestly, I feel like we. We are way behind in giving them the facilities that they need to adequately do the job of protecting our city. And, you know, one of the things that, that I talked about, um, in the committee is, our city is not going to stay this size. You know, it's gonna continue growing every year, we're gonna continue to see more development and more people moving in. The more people are moving in, the more inadequate this facility will be, and. You know, I'm sure that the, the city councilors are all aware that, um, you know, an independent study showed that we're already inadequate for the city that we have. So it's gonna get worse, and, um, you know, I, I think it's important that we do this, and, you know. If we as committee members can help in any way with the public awareness campaign and, you know, and help share some of the, uh. Uh, the targeting, if you will, or, or the, uh, the, I guess, being under the examination, you know, I think that we, we should make ourselves available. To do that and help, help spread the message that this, this is needful, that's, that's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh, Mayor, I don't see anybody else that has chatted or, uh, raised their hands, so.
Okay, um, I don't think we have any other questions, and, uh, and we will be looking at rec, getting your recommendation from the council at our, uh, next. Work session, and, uh, maybe approve it later that night, so, I, again, appreciate the committee and their, uh, they're taking the time to. Help advise, uh, the council, so thank you very, very much.
See you later, have a good day, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, so, our next item for discussion is. Building Division Semi-Annual Report, Mike, Michael D. Rosa, our building official, there he is.
Yeah, good afternoon, thank you, council, thank you, Mayor, Happy New Year to everybody. And, uh, just since there are some new faces, I just kinda wanted to do just a brief overview of what our building department does here at the city. We implement, uh, we administer the state building codes, and we do that through a permit process. Uh, the state codes are adopted throughout the entire state, they're applicable whether we apply them or not. Uh, but we hold the program for the structural, mechanical, and plumbing, uh, administration in our area, and so. Just wanted to kind of give you a, uh, brief overview of that, and then I'll jump right into the report. Uh, this report goes from July until December, July first until December twenty-eighth of twenty twenty. Uh, we had three hundred and twenty-four building permit applications, uh, through that time. Two hundred and thirty-two of those required a plan review, and, uh, during that time, uh, we were doing about eighty-three inspections a week. And, uh, I want to just kind of pause there for just a second, because it is, that's up from the previous report that I gave you of sixty-six inspections. Week, um, and we still have the same amount of staff, two-point-four full-time employees that are performing all this work, and so. One of the things I'm pleased to report is, is that we are filling that need, uh, for more staff, and we have, uh. Offered a, uh, building inspector position to a gentleman named John Hicks, and he accepted that position and is actually starting next week. On Monday, the eleventh, um, and, uh, he brings a lot of construction experience, uh, including inspection experience. Uh, credentials that allow him to expand beyond just, uh, kind of what we're initially hiring, uh, out for the immediate need, which is residential inspections. And, uh, and so we're looking forward to getting him on board next week and, and starting to, uh. Increase our services to the community. Since last time I saw you guys, uh, we were working on, uh, some of the action items, which included our Oregon e-permitting software implementation. And, uh, we have successfully gotten through that, uh, we went live on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Um, and, uh, this, the, it's a web-based software that allows, uh, people to apply for permits. Uh, contractors can apply for and receive their permits online in some conditions. It allows them to make payments online, it allows for the, uh, for the folks out in the field that are scheduling inspections. Allows them multiple ways to get those inspections scheduled, in fact, I was, uh, just getting praise from, uh, one of the superintendents in our subdivisions. Talking about how he has cut down his time in, in scheduling and managing his inspections considerably with, uh, the new app. That he's been able to download and use, uh, out in the field, and so, uh, getting good response back from, uh, from the. People that are using the system, and, uh, as well as we continue conversations internally to. Adapt that system to our processes and improve those processes. From there, um, I'll just kinda, I kinda gave you the statistics on the, on the. On our, uh, inspections and plan reviews, um. We had some very high, the, the amount of eighty-six, or, I'm sorry, eighty-four, eighty-three inspections per week. Um, I also wanted to say that that was not entirely handled by me personally. Um, I wanted to let you know that through our, uh, IGAs that we use, the county has been helping us maintain service levels so that we can. Continue to keep up with the pace of things out there, but the much-needed relief with John coming on board is, is very exciting. Um, and their contractors are excited as well as they hear that we are, um. Getting him on board, um, kind of moving forward into our next action item, uh, for electronic plan review and, uh, uh, submittal and plan review. Um, not a whole lot of movement has happened on that since last time we talked, um, I have been watching closely as this county, uh, Columbia County's kind of going through this. Process as well, so, I've been talking with their building official, Suzie Doll, a little bit as well, uh, on some of the processes that they're using. And, uh, and, and, uh, we'll definitely have more to report in the next one on this, as we'll start to determine. Prioritize the services that we want to provide, get at a cost of implementation and, and, uh, any equipment that's needed to move forward. And, uh. Also, since last time, uh, we spoke, uh, we've received additional certifications, so now our department is. Able to perform fire life safety reviews, um, which is something it wasn't doing, uh, at least for a, a while. And, uh, that will help, uh, save a considerable amount of money, uh, through our, uh, through our plan reviews. Uh, instead of outsourcing that to other agencies. And that is really, um, it in a nutshell, and I would open it up to any questions to you guys. As well as if there's any parts of, uh, or any other items that you need to report on, uh, please feel free to let me know.
Three questions for Michael?
Yeah, I have one, we've just talked about, uh, redoing the police station. Uh, how much space do you really need? You're kind of crammed in down in City Hall. You have any recommendations, what would be ideal for you? I'm kinda pushing why we need some new stuff around this town, but it looks like you guys are pretty crammed in.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we're, so our, our, the building department is located at City Hall on the first floor, and if you come down here and walk in, you would. Uh, be greeted by our support staff, Heidi and Christina, um, and we were able to shoehorn a spot in the corner there for, for John when he starts on Monday. Um, but it is, it is very busy, um, we are, you know, there are some rules right now that require us to stay separated, so. There, we're taking that into consideration, uh, my office is, uh, a little tight. We've talked about needing more space for plan review processes, primarily plans, tables, and areas to store, store the plans. You know, as far as how much square footage, I, I don't know if I can give an exact amount on that, um, but yeah, if you were to see what we, what we've got now. And the other part, too, I, I would emphasize on is, um, our department, through those permits, some permits just come through us and go out the door. Other permits require collaboration between other departments as well, uh, so we see planning, putting approvals, uh, engineering, uh, public works. And, and right now, all of those departments are separated by a level, uh, I, we're on the first floor and they're on the second level. So I, you know, there's, there's some logistical pieces to that, that, uh, that kind of become a nuisance, but, you know. Right now, we make work what we've got, and, but if there's ever a chance to expand, I'm, I, I'd be all for it.
Thank you. Yes, it, this kind of the idea of the thinking is if what we talked about in our previous discussion did happen, that, uh, that would free up our. Court side of that building over there, where planning could go, and I'm just sitting here thinking in my head, and I don't know the square footage of Jenny. Um, Jacob's office, new office, but, uh, Sue's office, which is now, um, Mohammed's. Uh, Mohammed's office, Jacob's office, and what Michael, I think, a, and Heidi and, uh, Christina. Um, I think that square footage, those workspace is, you're probably still gonna be about, uh, half. The size of our, what you're working in currently of our courts building. And thinking about our courts building, the way it's laid out, and the back offices and stuff, so, we be patient, that's kind of what. If that works out, um, that's kind of with the vision of a lot of the counselors, and I'm sure you've heard that before, Topaz, right?
Right, I just want to keep it on the table that we need space.
Yes, we do, and I want to thank Michael for all his hard work, just because, um, he needs to be recognized. Um, you know, he's been killing it as far as inspections, yeah, he hasn't done them all, but he has been working tirelessly. Going to school, he just passed his fire life save, savings and, uh, brought that fee in-house to our city. Which was getting outsourced to Skepti's Fire District, because they were the only ones with that, um. Really a quality employee that we have, and I just wanted to thank him.
Thank you, Matt, thank you.
Yep, Matt, uh, I, I'd also like to thank Michael, it's, I've been on the council. Now for fourteen years, and he is by far the best and most effective. Uh, that's been in that department and managing that department and, and putting in the time that I've seen thus far. So, uh, Councilor Topaz brought up an interesting, uh, question, uh, regarding, uh, space. And I think Ma- Mayor Show responded very effectively to, uh, look at that space in the, in the courts and. Uh, somewhat be patient, so Michael, uh, for now, uh, I hope, uh. You know, you know that it's in our thoughts, but, uh, for now, uh, we want to, we want to give you the space you need. For the work you do.
I appreciate the words, thank you, guys.
All right, I don't think there's gonna be other questions, um, I, I love the email, uh, e permitting process is going good and people are liking it. So that helps expedite, you guys have worked tirelessly, also in John Walsh's, you know, and this whole planning. Department has worked to just go through the process and continue to look to revamp, because we've heard there were some. Uh, issues and just trying to streamline, and we're still at work in progress, and we're getting there, so, good work.
Thank you, guys, have a good afternoon.
John, would you agree?
Yeah, your, your words is notes of appreciation, we're on the tip of my tongue, as far as extending the appreciation to. To Mike and all his hard work and schooling efforts to get up to speed, and, uh, yeah, we're, we're, it's getting better. I think the contractors are, the volume keeps decreasing, but are, for, for being more effective and efficient, and. Hopefully, it's notable in the field, so.
Yep, I mean, you, I wanted to recognize you for that, too, as well.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, review proposed bench donation for McCormick Park. All right, I know we've had this discussion before about a bench, uh, over the dog park, a memorial bench, is that what this is about?
I believe this is an additional one.
Yeah, this is an additional one, and, and I sent the Kathy Searstad the information to get on the Zoom, but I don't see her on there. Unless she has iPad.
Or has she called in or anything like that, maybe not? Um, so, I'm not completely sure, um, what, what discussion were we wanting to. What we want to talk about on this?
Whether or not you want to approve it. It's been through the Parks and Trails Commission.
Right, the, um, the, the Parks Commission, the Parks Commission met, uh, uh, last time and overwhelmingly. Approved the, uh, bench donation from Kathy Searstad and, uh, her also representing the Lions Club. Which is a wonderful teaming in our parks, as you know, in McCormick Park. They have set up the exercise trail, they do various, uh, kinds of cleanup, kinds of, uh, issues in McCormick Park. Uh, it's a wonderful service to our community, and she's stepping forward on behalf of, uh, on behalf of the Lions Club. And they have, uh, they have so many, uh. Uh, k- kinds of ties into these benches that can help facilitate all our parks. If we stay on board, and so she came with this proposal to the Parks Commission, and I overwhelmingly support it.
Yeah, Patrick. Or Councilor Berkeley.
It's okay, no, I had an opportunity to talk with Kathy after I, I looked at the, uh. The, uh, materials she provided in the packet, and my understanding then is that this is, this particular proposal is for two benches. Uh, one of which would be at the, uh, New Bridge near the old campgrounds on the, uh, south side. Um, there's a section, uh, Milton Creek that is a popular place for, uh, families and children. And dogs, uh, to, uh, spend time, uh, in the creek, and so that, um, that, they, they thought that would be a good spot. For it, um, try to get it up out of the flood level, if it's possible, but that would be one spot, so on that, the, yeah, on the. The port, Old Port and roadside of the, uh, of the, the new pedestrian bridge, and the second spot. Uh, is where the, uh, trail intersection is, um, so at the corner of, uh, Old Portland and, uh. because it's South Eighteenth, where that garden bed is with the McCormick Park sign. So on the park side of that, on the trail, behind the flower bed, there's kind of a wider space where trails inter intersect that that was proposal for putting it there as a good transition point or joggers to stop and tie their shoes again, things like that. So it sounds like to me, yeah, since the commission Parks Commission already approved of it and all, I think we should go ahead with accepting this donation.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. And I think one of the one of the ideas is, okay, the position of that chair or the I'm sorry, the bench and that bench was talked about a bit in the Parks Commission. Yeah, do they does the participants really want to sit in a park and look at traffic? Or would they rather have the park bench turned and look into the natural part of the park? For people who are jogging, it would be right there so that they wouldn't have to walk around or whatever. So positioning those is obviously a staff is obviously is a staff decision, but the recommendation is to point that if if they can into the park so that people who are resting aren't encumbered by traffic and they're enjoying the naturalness of the park as well as it's a convenience for people who are walking, who can sit down very easily.
Okay, I don't know if this is something that we need to kick up to the evening. I don't know. We've been lately, as of lately, so the rest of the council knows we're trying not to do too many action items. And if it weren't something that, and I don't feel like this really is, I think it's a very good thing. It's not something that really would have a lot of public testimony around. And that's the reason for us doing that to allow people to hear either today and be able to comment tonight. And but I don't think that warrants it. The only thing I'd be concerned about, and it's probably ways out, is we're going to have a turnabout in our master plan or coming down our corridor. Is that's going to have a turnabout and the placement of that bench where so maybe with the city engineer, just maybe locate where it would be at least far enough off the beaten path that it does not involve get taken out when the turnabout happens. But I mean, Lions Club wanting to donate two benches. Great. I love it.
Rick, when they get to that turnabout, the amount of work is going to be done. Moving a bench is not even a consideration.
I know, but but it's
Somebody will will raise a thing about it. I think it's a go all the way around. Besides, if you're old people and walking a long distance, any bench is a good place.
That's the bad part about me. I'm always forward thinking. I'm sorry for that. I apologize. I'm always looking to the future.
I've looked at the boundary lines of the of where the city issue is, then that that area would be far enough off, even if it was a turnaround. I think it would be welcome, Rick.
Okay, yeah, that's all that was my only consideration because we have that is our largest turnaround for trucks because of the industrial property.
I think the Garden Club raised the same issue as they keep that area around the McCormick Park sign. Weeded and the maintenance on that. So there was a question that I had about the the new transportation design of a of a turnabout there, how that would impact that area. I don't know exactly how it would impact the area, but if that area is still there for that sign and for their garden spot.
Okay, is anybody deadly opposed to having two new benches? I don't hear nobody. So go ahead. All right. All right. Consideration of next item is a consideration of right away dedication by nine seventy Oregon Street. Turned over to Jacob Grecian, our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
So recently, we had what's called a site development review for a property. And whenever we have these kind of proposals to develop a property, to expand it, things like that, we have many things to consider. And one of those things that we consider is right of way dedication is right of way dedication justified and how much? And so I'm going to share a screen to tell you the story here. Okay, can everybody see a map?
Yep.
Fantastic. So this should be a familiar street to cities folks because we have some facilities on there. So here's Deer Island Road. This is the north side of town. Right here, this is the transit center. This is an older aerial photo, so it wasn't built yet. And then the subject property, there's a little mini storage facility right here. Then you have city shops, public work facility in this area or this area, excuse me. This is the county Public Works Department Humane Society. And then at the end of this leg of Oregon Street between Deer Island Street and the Humane Society is the Crestwood Manufactured Home Park. So that's that's where we're at. Oregon Street, north of Deer Island Road, has a right of way width of forty feet. This property, and I'll show you that real quick here. For many decades, it has been developed with two separate storage buildings, one here and one here. And their proposals to add three thousand square foot of storage space, a building in the middle as shown here. So that's that's the proposal that we reviewed pretty recently. That's the subject of this discussion. Now, there are several things that we consider in right of way with, including the purpose of the road, the classification of the road, and things like that. Oregon Street here is classified as a collector's street for our transportation systems plan. And when we look at street classifications, there's various categories and it all is based on how much is it intended for through travel or for access? So on the greater end of the spectrum, when we're talking about through travel, you have interstates. Do you see direct driveways on interstates? No, because the ultimate purpose is through travel. On the other side of the spectrum, you may have an alley. And do you see driveways on alleys? Yeah, you probably see a whole bunch. Because in that case, it's a street for access. A collector's street is somewhere in between. So we have an existing forty foot right of way for this leg of Oregon Street. In our current standards for a forty foot right of way would be for a road that's going to access an assemblage of uses whose average daily trips, and that's just, you know, how much traffic you have, and traffic engineers have all these calculations to determine trips, but whose average daily trips will not exceed two hundred. And just to give you an idea of what that means, a standard detached Singapore family dwelling is the equivalent of about ten average daily trips. And so that would be about twenty homes. If we look at Crestwood alone, Crestwood is a one hundred and fifty one space manufactured home park. There's a few spaces that still are not occupied, but ultimately it will be one hundred and fifty one dwelling units. There's a different calculation for manufactured home parks. But based on the calculations that we have, the average daily trips for Crestwood alone, not including the county city public works departments or the storage facility is seven hundred and fifty four. So it's about two hundred and seventy seven percent greater. And what we don't really allow on a forty foot wide right of way. Of course, it's preexisting. It's been there a long time. So when one of the conditions of the this development would be to add ten feet of right of way dedication. And you can kind of see that with the transit center. You can see this little offset between here and here. The Transit Center was a very substantial development, and they dedicated some right away to Oregon Street. And so you're seeing a comparable thing there. And the whole idea behind that is, you know, as these properties develop and right away is dedicated, you're you're building the system for ultimate roadway, which may not be a roadway of the current, but a roadway of the future. In addition, in looking at the future, if you look at our transportation systems plan, so this is color coded based on the street classifications as I was talking about. Collectors are blue and arterials are red. Arterials are at a higher level of classification than collectors. But if we look at this closely, there are some connections proposed in the plan to connect with Madrona Court Sixth Street back here. And you can kind of see some of the framework of that in place. So Belton Road, which is Sixth Street, and then Madrona Court, you have this little stub. Now, when we're talking about the future, you know, we're not going to condemn this property and all the arguably affordable units on there just to put a new street through there. But someday it's going to redevelop and we have these plans to help shape that for public needs. Now, the reason that we're here today is the property owner is dissatisfied with this requirement. And they have filed an appeal to the planning commission, which they have a right to do. This was a decision at staff level. And the appellate authority or the person they can appeal to is the planning commission. However, right of way dedications ultimately require authorization by the council to accept it. And so the consideration for the council here is if you want to preemptively reject that right of way dedication. So we don't have a right of way dedication document before you. Normally, we would and, you know, we may all here's this right of way dedication. Here's the story behind it. Please authorize the mayor's signature. In this case, we don't have that that document. But we thought, well, okay, we'll give the applicant a chance to see if the council wants to preemptively reject it. And then the appeal is moot because that is the only issue they are challenging, and there's no point in going forward with it. So the first question then is, is the council comfortable discussing this tonight as part of your work session, action items on whether or not you want to preemptively vote on it? Personally, I don't have heartburn either way, but obviously we did make this decision. And just to help you with this and to show that I don't have heartburn. Let's see, is there anything else I want to say here? Oh, yeah. Before I get to that. So anyways, it shows you the potential connections, which will have even more vehicle trips. And when we look at these widths, there's a reason for it because there's a street design based on these widths. And so here's a collector's design. Let me zoom in there. So you can see that better. So a collector's street has a full cadre of improvements, including your travel lanes, bike lanes, your landscape strip and your sidewalk. And when we look at our forty foot standard, which is based on limited uses, you have a minimum twenty six foot width. And then sidewalks on either side. And this this twenty six is based on a two travel lanes of ten feet in width and six feet in on street parking width. Now, and the applicant is here, so I'm I'm sure they would like to talk to the council too, once I'm done. If the council wants to vote on this tonight, I wanted to give you the information, at least the the kind of findings that we would recommend if you want to reject that dedication. So what would happen is tonight, if you vote on this, you reject the dedication, then we can say, well, there's no point in the planning commission review of the appeal, we'll refund the money and all move on with our lives. And I just prepared this today, so this is not in your own packets. But these would be some of the the basis for your decisions to reject the dedication. And I'll paraphrase these. First of all, Crestwood, the private streets within Crestwood. So the public right of way ends here. And then all these streets in here are private. For those of you who haven't been in this subdivision, these streets are basically swaths of asphalt. There's no bike lanes, no sidewalks, no things like that. And these people have been here a long time. You have not received complaints, at least that I'm aware of. If you have, this would be a good time to talk about it. Like you have about the folks on North Vernonia Street, for example, who've been concerned about safety hazards. So these people are used to streets without those kind of standards. And so currently then Oregon Street is kind of extension of, you know, that underdeveloped street, if you will. So
Jacob, part of the reason why is because and I want the rest of the council, the two new councillors to know that we call speed bump the speed bump calming. What do we call it? Traffic calming.
Traffic calming.
But that thing is loaded with speed bumps down there. I mean, you want to talk about, I've never been over so many speed bumps in my life. So that would explain why there would be no complaints of sidewalks down there.
Yeah. And and Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned that. Well, I'm referring to this leg of Oregon Street.
Okay.
Because obviously, you know, there's two places.
Private. That is private, completely private.
All this is private. Yep.
Yes.
And the the one avenue, at least legal avenue without trespassing, to get to the city core is Oregon Street, be it using vehicles, bicycles, or on foot. And so so on my guess is, well, they're used to this. And so this is kind of an extension of just that that basic underdeveloped street. So that would be one thing. The other thing to consider, so we talked about the forty foot being kind of narrow for the amount of businesses on there. We do have the adjacent railroad right of way. And and part of our planning in the past, the railroad has expressed concerns about people crossing the tracks, though not at this location, more in the central area. And they talked about putting fences up maybe someday. We haven't heard those kind of complaints here. And and we know if you just go out there and you can see in this photo that for a long, long time, people use the railroad right of way for parking, and that also provides extra width for public passage. And so that's kind of what I'm talking about in number two, as far as this passive, unapproved, but accessible area of the railroad right of way. And then three, and I think this is one of the, well, I know it's one of the applicant's arguments. This is a simple mini storage facility, and so it does have redevelopment potential in the future. And so right of way dedication requirements can be considered again. So if you do want to vote and you do reject it, I wouldn't have heartburn as long as these findings are the basis of that falls within these recommendations here. So any questions for me before we see if Darrell Kersley, and I don't know if it's Bailey is in the audience, but I know Darrell is, if he wants to speak.
Jacob, if you drive down that street on the right side as you're going north, there's all kinds of asphalt aprons going to the facilities and not really businesses. It's like you can almost drive off the street and hit a building without knowing you're leaving the road. The visual thing seems it's a bigger than a forty foot right of way.
Yes, with that railroad right of way. And that's why, you know, in kind of thinking about, you know, I wanted to give you something to latch on to if you desired it. And because that railroad right of way is there, you know, that's where I'm talking about that that passive accommodation, which makes it look huge.
Yeah, even in front of the city garage, it looks like, I mean, there's a lot of asphalt between the road, if you would, and Yeah, even in front of the city garage, it looks like, I mean, there's a lot of asphalt between the road, if you would, and the building. Is it possible at some time to expand our right of way towards the railroad? Obviously, there's negotiations or stealing the land from them. But is there any other reason why the road couldn't expand towards the railroad?
Have you dealt with the railroad much?
I've dealt with them enough times to know that God doesn't like them. So but is it legally impossible? I know what the the personality probably, but is it legally impossible to go that direction?
Yes.
I don't know, but I think it's impractical to.
Assume.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if I could chime in on the rail piece of that, and we did successfully negotiate a railroad right of way vacation here on the waterfront on the veneer property. But that was the first time that it ever been done. They didn't even, they they did not even know how to handle it. It was recognized the city's economic development goals and saw the value. And yeah, we got it done, but it was very foreign concept to vacate right away.
And John, that was a railroad property that was not being used, that was abandoned in a sense. And I can't imagine the railroad going forward, or O dot rail going forward with an existing rail that's functioning and compromising in any way.
Yeah, and I think Council President Morton's right. It was twofold. There was one that wasn't being used. And then I think we should, if I recall, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we shrunk down in our industrial property to a five-foot easement beyond where a railcar would be. Is that correct, John?
I'm not tracking with you there.
Did I did I skip out?
I think so, because I missed some of your.
Okay, so in a recap, as we got rid of some potential rail down towards veneer property, but we also shrink in our industrial, we shrink the right of way dedication down to five feet on each side of what a railcar width would be. Is that correct?
That was a discrepancy in the map that we had to true up. That there was a difference between the the survey and what was shown on the tax record maps. So it resulted in that. Then we got another, and then we obtained another easement to kind of give the cities right of way along the, or easement along the right of way, I suppose.
Yeah, because they did still being currently used, right? A couple of times, a couple of train cars coming in and out of there. At random, for Cascade, yeah, yeah.
One other point I wanted to make with this is that the city did look at this, acquiring this property several years ago as part of an assemblage strategy to, you know, relocate public works somewhere else and have a pretty more contiguous sizable parcel because we own all the property around it. And that any vacation that we do in this property would have likely match the neighboring properties of both north and south of it as well. So if we require it here, we'd be requiring it of ourselves, I guess is my point.
It is, it is. And that's a good point, John. It is setting a precedent so to speak for this entire leg. And I will point out that it's currently forty, ten feet gets it to fifty, not to the sixty. And because, you know, we didn't want to the transit center, we did a similar thing, is we didn't burden them with the entire dedication. We thought that was overkill. And so it was kind of half of what was needed. And so that's kind of the comparable concept here.
Jacob, and I don't recall ever, I don't think, not having something like this go to the planning commission first to come to us, unless it is a street vacation.
This is weird and different. But it was, the idea was, well, technically, the council does ultimately approve the right of way dedication. So if I know that they're not going to do it, what's the point of going forward with it? So it is kind of creative thinking. And if that, so and that why, that's why the first question is, if you're even comfortable making a vote tonight.
I can tell you this, just to answer that question from my point of view, I am not prepared to make that vote tonight. Okay, so that I would like to research this just a bit more so that if my vote is appropriate and accurate and it's a good appraisal of how I feel about this situation. Right now, it's a guessing game.
And I would like to hear from the applicant first. He he did show up here. I'd like to give Darrell Kersley a chance to talk to us before we even start talking about this.
Okay.
Yep. Jacob, Darrell, are you there? If you could unmute him, Jacob, you might have the
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thanks for hearing me. So my issue isn't so much as the need to widen that street down the road. It affects it as us at this time, if 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 it's widened. Because where it affects us is Jacob tells us we don't have to move the fence at this time. The word effect is if we were to sell this property, or the lending institution would not let us leave that property, which would cause us Oh.
Yeah, you sound like you were getting away from your phone or something there, Darrell. I don't know.
I'm at the computer, so I don't know where my speaker is.
Okay. So anyway, go ahead, re-go back just a few sentences because I felt that was vitally important, what you were saying. I kind of did hear it, so.
Yeah, so it's gonna, if we were to sell this property, whether to anybody, the new, the lending institution wouldn't loan with the fence and the gate not in compliance with the law. That would have to be moved, which would cost us fifteen to twenty thousand dollars just to move that fence ten feet and the gate. So my whole point is, I see the need or what the city wants to do in the future. But I think it is so far down the line that it's that you would be able to vacate Crestwood and create a that connection of that street. It's more likely that our property would be sold and redeveloped because we don't have a lot of value in the buildings that we have. But it is a prime location having highway visibility. So I'm just thinking, this is premature of what the final goal is. And it's going to affect us financially now, whereas this may not happen for fifty longer years. And let's see what else. And that's, if we do have to move that, right now, we have eighteen feet from the fence to, we have a great big advertising signpost that I'm sure everybody's seen. There's eighteen feet there, and if we had to move that fence in ten feet, that only leaves eight feet for the people to exit around that building on that end of the building, which is 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 feasible for a car and a trailer to make that corner and then make the corner around the gate. So it's it's affecting it. So then people won't want to rent on that backside because of the access. So it's just a burden for us at this time. Like I said, I think your plan isn't bad, it's just premature.
Yeah.
Can I talk?
Sure.
As you know, years ago, that property was was looked at by the city and there was a, the the person who held that property wanted to sell it to the city. And we thought that that was a great idea because it would combine our public works area into into a meaningful area, work area. In other words, our public works is area is divided by that property. So we wanted to go forward with that, but we felt that the, there would be a discrepancy in and a a it would be problematic with the sale of that property to the city. And that is the reason that the city and the only reason that the city and the city council at that time voted no on the obtaining that property. And I, and so it it it's in your jurisdiction now, it's your property. And I would just say that the city is still, would still entertain a some kind of proposal to possibly purchase that property for Public Works because Public Works is separated now by that property. And it would be meaningful to Public Works. Our Public Works department was excited about obtaining that, as was as was the council at one at at one time, knowing that it could fulfill that need. I just want to, I just want to go on record for, to say that, that it is a valuable piece of property for the city and to be obtained by Public Works, more than it is an investment property that could potentially be residential or be commercial residential, whatever the zoning would be on that. But that, I just wanted to kind of set the historical significance of that property to our new council members so that they know what the conversations in the past has been about that property. And I hope I'm not convoluted, confusing any kinds of issues that way. So anyway, thanks for hearing me.
Yeah, so so, yeah, I I understand the history there and we're not ready to sell it at this point, but it definitely gives us an option at that point when we do decide to do it, to offer it to the city.
So I heard Counselor Chilton, something she wanted to ask a question.
And Patrick or Counselor Berkeley also raised his hand.
Okay.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Darrell and his input. And I, that's news to me, Counselor Morton, so I really appreciate that inside scoop also, so thank you.
Hey, Counsel Berkeley.
Yeah, I think, again, I appreciate the background information. And also the, seeing what the long-term plans of the city might be. But right now, on the immediate issue about whether or not the counts, we want to maybe take a vote of the council. I guess I I would prefer that the process go, what might would be standard is that if the planning commission would be the, you know, initial default group to take a look at it, I I guess that would be my preference because we have a planning commission to look at these things, to do that, you know, to look at this appeal. And then if it does come before us again, you know, we could look at it again. But my my preference would be to let the the process go and allow the appeal to the the planning commission to go forward.
My only question would be the building is, are you planning on building new? Are you just looking at keeping all the buildings in the same area? Because right now, you're asking, what I hear you asking for, Jacob, what I hear them asking for is to vacate or or get the this chunk of property because of the fence and the fence alone? Or are they wanting to push a building out further?
The dedication, well, they don't want to dedicate. The fence, they were at sad, the the yellow that I have half handsardly shaded here is the approximate area of dedication. The new building is here.
Oh, I, yeah, I wasn't even reading. I thought that was an existing building. Okay.
Oh, yeah. So this is new, existing, existing. And this is the tight point here. I I drove this yesterday that Darrell is talking about. And it is, it is, I was in a new Ford Escape and it would be
So we have one, we have one existing building that's way out there, a skinny one. And then we have an older existing building, this almost the same size, which would be the same setback. I'm just looking at it. I'm trying to gather, actually a little bit further setback, by the way, that sits there a little on the angle. Is that correct, the way I'm seeing that?
Yeah, there's actually twenty eight feet there from that bigger building to the fence. But the the sign, the big vertical sign there, it's much pinching us off.
Yep. And I know that, yes, unfortunately, that, you know, sign is revenue and I get that in.
Well, to be honest with you, it is not. We don't own that sign and we get nothing from this.
Oh, really?
It's, the sign has been sold and Mr. Peterson sold it when he had the property. So we have no, no tie to it at all.
Oh, gosh, that that would be weird and closing.
Could you see if Mr. Bailey's
Oh, yeah. I am not seeing him on here.
I see Bob Bra Wind.
Here, I got him on speakerphone. Let's see if you can hear him. Go ahead, Rich. Oh, hold on just a second. Hold on. Right now. Can you actually hear that?
No, it's kind of very Yeah, I can't hear him. Anybody else, can you hear him?
You can, but there's no, there's a lot of feedback and cycling through because it's going through his speakers and then through the computer speakers.
But anyway.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'd like to say is, is we're ready to build this building. We've got the plans and everything. And this just is just delaying this, and that's why Jacob was trying to shortcut this for us because we're losing revenue. The building has been ordered and is ready to be delivered. So if that's what you're playing conditions, we've got to wait. Back to you. So you're, we're spinning our wheels. And so that, I appreciate Jacob make, trying to make this effort to shorten the circuits, the the system to make, to move it through. And that's what we're hoping. Like you say, the the odds of this collector to happen is going to be fifty years down the road. You're sure you have to displace all those people in Crestwood. And that's not even something that anybody's considered. So I'm just saying, this is way premature, I think. And we're, you're killing us.
Okay.
The mayor, can I make one other point right here?
Yes.
So earlier, when I said it's something that we're doing to ourselves, I didn't mean, I mean that we shouldn't do it. I'm now, what I was saying is that if we're the most likely buyer in the future, that that dedication is going to happen at some point anyway, so whether it's through a
And I agree with that point.
Yep.
So that's what I'm saying, it's premature to force us to do this when it'll affect us monetarily at this time.
Yeah, I mean, the the new building that you're, yeah, I see the pinch point. I absolutely see it. Okay, thank you, Darrell. I think, I think we get what you, why you're here, for sure. You made it very clear, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Darrell.
You mentioned.
Okay, Jacob. So you've asked us if this is something we want to put on for tonight. And I mean, it seems kind of pretty clear. I mean, I don't know how much, Jacob, how much more can we know about this? Can we learn about this? Are you still there, Jacob, Richard?
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about this stuff at nauseam. But I think the basics have been presented, you know, that we consider right of way dedication. We consider it based on our street plans. There's a lot of unique factors in this case. And and really, I was on the fence on this. Right. You know, when I was talking to Darrell about it early on, I was kind of figuring, well, I don't think, you know, right of way dedication is something to consider. But I don't think we would necessarily require it. And, you know, one of my motivation factors was the Gable Road project and seeing how, in some cases, past right of way dedications were poorly administered. And I was like, ah, son of a gun, you know, I have these plans I have to look at. But I'm also telling you, you know, if you as a council want to disagree with me, I have no heartburn. But I'm also telling you, you know, if you as a council want to disagree with me, I have no heartburn. And I'm giving you the ammo um, that will make me sleep good at night. Um, if you reject the right away dedication um, based on um, this stuff.
Sure, sure, but, but what you're saying is that those are the basis that you would justify if we were to. And you said you're kind of, and you said you're kind of on the fence and I kind of, are you figuratively speaking with that fence that they're talking about they'd have to move if they sold that?
That wasn't intentional, but that is a good accidental part of the conversation, isn't it?
Cause it sounds like we're really talking about a fence, is what it really sounds like. I mean, I know it's a dedication of right away. But it really sounds like it's a fence removal in, in the future, potentially.
Yeah, and, and we're not, we're not saying to remove the fence. Um, you know, I, I, I know we've had issue, issues with lenders and buildings in right of way. Um, I never dealt with fences in right of way.
Hey, Jacob, is this something you can remote in from home later if we have discussions? Cause we always have these at the end of our council meeting. Do you have internet service there?
Um, yeah, 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 I, I would.
Would you, do you have the ability to tonight?
Uh, yes.
Jacob, I've got a question. Let's say we uh, dedicate the forty feet, but rent the ground between where the fence is now and where the forty feet is for a dollar a year until we need it, is that possible?
Um, it's, I believe that that complicates it more than it needs to be based on the fairly basic aspects of the proposal.
Yeah. Cause you know, I can see moving the fence, but losing a couple of uh, storage areas to get my turnaround. A, a, a number of, we say, operational adjustments to keep a, a going business and still get the forty feet. As I say, I'll rent them that space for a couple of years at a dollar a year. So we as operational space with not moving the fence. Uh, and obviously we're now talking about the legality of right aways and all this other stuff. It's kind of your thing.
And I, and I did think about right of way use agreements, um, which is things that we've kind of talked about here and there. Um, it doesn't come up that often. And if this was a major shopping center, you know, then it might be worth the extra effort of something like that. Be- because it's so simple, you know, in my view, it's either you do or you don't.
Hey, uh, Counselor Morton, you're, you're saying hi to your little puppy and we can hear you.
That's probably, that's probably the best thing you'll hear me say all day long.
It was very positive, though.
It was very funny. So I would like to move this up to later tonight, just because, I mean, we need to discuss, you know, um, our feelings on it. And we don't want to hold up. We are a city moving forward, no matter what our decisions are, yea or nay, we need to do it and it's our job. So that's what we signed up for. So Jacob, uh, you'll be available towards the end of our meeting. It probably, I could tell you in just looking at it, um, it looks like it was gonna be a pretty short meeting tonight, I'm looking at our agenda, so it, it is. So um, it won't be, won't, I would chime in probably about seven ten, make sure you're available and we'll have you out of here.
Notwithstanding visitor comments, of course.
You never know.
It's always a wild card.
Yeah, and actually you probably might want it about seven fifteen because of uh, uh, our video. And if anybody does want to show up to congratulate Counselor Chilton, myself, Berkeley, yes.
Can I, can I add one thing here also?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bailey's, and he's got a couple of things, is there some way you can call and express his uh, opinion?
Yeah, I mean, he could, he could call him later, yes, I will allow him to chime in tonight's meeting.
Cause he, he can say, but for some reason he can't talk to.
Okay, so uh, he can get the Zoom link uh, on our website for tonight's meeting, which will be different. And they also have a phone way of coming in, right, correct, Matt?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that you can just call right now?
Uh, you can, you can, you can, you can call the front office to, uh, no, no, we're, we're moving on from this subject, Daryl. I'm sorry, but I have a tight meeting and that's the way I run it. But you can call in tonight at about, probably like I said, seven fifteen-ish, just to be on the phone and ready. And if, if he's not there by uh, um, if, we'll even wait till seven twenty if I have to pick around a couple of items, if I don't see. But.
Well, he can hear you, but he just can't hear you.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and, and the last thing I'd just like to make sure, our, like I say, the biggest thing about the fence is if we were to, if we were to refinance what we have, the bank would not loan on that until we move that fence onto our property to bring it into compliance.
So that's a big one, too.
It's a real big one, it, it's not that the fence is where it is, is fine, it's, they're gonna require us to move it to be in compliance with their aspects of it.
In, in, in business, you use the bank's money to the, and you pencil it out and I get that, yes, so, okay, yes.
I mean, that's, that's probably one of the major things.
Yep, yep. Yeah, yes, that is a good point, so we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Uh, tell Rich to call in later tonight, okay? All right. Okay, um. So moving forward, are we, okay, moving forward, council?
Three o'clock, three o'clock break.
Uh, do you want to, or, or do we have two more items? We have our strategic action plan and uh, John, do you have quite a bit of stuff to report?
Oh, not, yeah, fair amount, but there's a lot of stuff.
All right, yeah, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, let's just do a five-minute, okay?
Thank you, I've got to discipline my dog.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break and we'll be back at uh, three oh five, so seven-minute break. Okay?
Sad, you've been a bad dog.
Right. And I could, I could see when you first logged on, but then you disappeared.
Yeah. But I thought you did, but then, and then I, cause I scrolled through the attending.
I'm out, I got lost there for a minute. Close, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I turned off the video and just so you know, we are still recording and still live on Facebook.
Okay, I'll go ahead and send a note to Jacob in between meetings, okay?
Okay.
I
Hope Doug's puppy didn't get away from him. Sound like he took her outside. Okay, I see he's back. I think uh, Patrick is there, there's Jessica, they're both on mute, but I think they're back, is that correct?
Yep.
Just give a, uh, if you want to unmute yourself and just say, yeah, we're back, cause I'm not, I'm not seeing you on this screen.
I'm back.
Yeah.
We're, we're back.
Counsel Berkeley? Are you there?
Bye, bye.
Okay, all right.
Hey, mayor, uh, could I, could I just kind of recap where we were? Uh, is it a council's decision to put that, to, to put that on the agenda tonight? Uh, or is it the mayor's decision? I already know whose decision and what it, what it is, but can you weigh in on that? So we all know the common process of how that decision was made? And uh, to get to, get to the point of having it on, on, on tonight.
You, you're exactly right, Doug, it is my agenda. And that is the, the power a mayor has, is he controls the agenda, he puts things on or takes things off. So yes, um, in a sense, I did kind of take authority. Usually I do ask of the council, cause it is a we, but I do have the authority to do that.
You're absolutely correct and thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
So do you.
And usually it is a we, most of the time, and I forgot that time, but most of the time it is a we.
All right, right now.
So just to clarify, mayor, is it gonna be under the work session action items?
Yes, yes, it is, and Kathy, I also need on there to vote for council president. And also, I need to also elect um, positions.
Okay.
A point position, excuse me.
You want that, Matt? You want that on the work?
Yeah.
Next, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's other, other situations that can compel items to, to the agenda as far as two or more counselors can put something.
Yes, yes, that, that is correct. But I do have that authority to do that, John.
Well, certainly.
Yes, yes, yeah. Okay, so um, so now we're gonna review strategic action plan updates. And Patrick, uh, or Counselor Berkeley and uh, Chilton, you will be, we'll be doing some retreats soon. And uh, you'll see these and we'll, we'll probably reprioritize some of them. But uh, I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant city manager and financial director, Matt Brown, I think is who's gonna help assist us with that.
Yeah, I just have one update that I wanted to talk with council about. Um, and staff has kind of talked internally about what we'd like to do, but um, obviously we need your um, guidance and moving forward. And it is revolving around communications and our streaming policies of public meetings. We've had um, a couple of instances where we started out streaming to YouTube. Uh, we then kind of switched to Facebook and that's what we're, we've been using for a while. One of the things that we have come to realize with Facebook is that it is difficult to use our agenda software to track timing. Whereas in using YouTube, we can.
Whereas if we go back to YouTube, we can add that embedded piece onto our website. All of our commission meetings would go back to being online. We have the timestamping issue that I talked about earlier. But staff would like to move back to YouTube and put that back on our website versus sticking with Facebook, which strictly just streams to Facebook. So we wanted to get your thoughts and comments on if you had an opinion on which way to go.
I like the YouTube because it's, you can segregate which chunk of meeting you want to look at too. With little yellow pauses sometimes on those videos within the YouTube, watch your whole clip. And I like that idea, and you can always share YouTube onto Facebook.
Yes, I, I approve, I approve the, would like to recommend. My recommendation would be to go with staff recommendation on this, and that would be YouTube.
Councillor Topaz, Berkeley, or Chilton, any comments?
Don't ask me about computer stuff. Not my thing.
Well, I think it's more versatile, I do, just so you know, councillor Topaz, you can grab it.
Zero opinion, I'm lost, so go for it.
Councillor Chilton?
I, I think that would be fine, just as long as maybe we find a way to continue to put it on our city Facebook page. Stream it there so that people that aren't up to the, up to date with changes and maybe trying to figure out how to get on YouTube Live or things like that, I think that would be a good change.
Once the, if, if my knowledge is correct, and this is obviously a whole new word for all of us. But we can very easily send the YouTube Live link onto Facebook when we go live. That could be something that either I could do, or, or City Recorder, or anybody doing the meetings could do. So it, it is still possible to inform people when that meeting is happening and the link to go directly to it.
So can you do that the other way around, Matt? Can it be on Facebook, and then could you send that link to YouTube?
No, it does not work that way.
Okay, well then, that, that makes total sense of just getting the most flexibility that we can.
Yep. Yep, I agree, and I, I think having the ability to have that timestamp, so folks can click it's to, to where the meeting is going, ongoing is, is a good idea.
It's very handy and something I think, I know I have missed drastically when I try and go back and watch meetings. And I have to keep clicking every, you know, inch or so to see where the meeting goes, so.
I, I, well, yes.
Yeah. Mayor, it sounds like everybody's on, on tap, but do you want to add this to the decisions tonight? Or are you okay with staff moving forward?
I think because it's like a staff recommendation and it makes total sense. It's one of those items that unless the rest of the council would like to push it tonight, I think what I heard is, everybody's like, yeah, let's just push this forward.
So, so we'll try and get this started at the next meeting on January 20th. So tonight's meeting will be the last one that is, you know, streamed to Facebook, so to speak, on this platform. And then on January 20th, we'll make that transition.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. City Administrator Report, John Walsh.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mayor. The couple other things on a strategic action before I go into my report is that, you heard a couple of them earlier in the Building Officials Report as far as his strategic actions are included. Going to the e-permitting, working on code updates, things of that nature. And we will also be tackling in the council retreats some of our good governance objectives. And, you know, we've had a really good effort to try to tie the strategic action plan to the work we do in the workshops and council meetings and agenda items, reports, all that nature. So measure things objectively and, and work, you know, work attendance, you know, it's relatively new, but it seems like it's working really well, so. So as far as my administrative report, I wanted to say Happy New Year and welcome the new council and welcome new councillors. And councillor Berkeley, councillor Chilton, they very much look forward to working with you, getting to know you and working along with the rest of the council. You know, 2020 was pretty awful in a lot of ways, and it's only up from here, I suppose, hopefully it's only up from here. But it should be a really good year for the city and a year where we start to see our plans turning into reality. A lot of planning work, hopefully we'll see some constructions and doing, and there'll be, you know, things. We're building a legacy right here, a lot of things about the waterfront. You know, working towards advancing the city towards a healthy, vibrant, livable community should be noteworthy. So things like, you know, improvements to the city park, just now I was, and they were there in the meeting. Sue Nelson dropped in to sign a purchase order agreement for the McCormick Park, Park Play Equipment that we council approved at its last meeting. You know, and that park will be from, according to the contractor, this will be one of the biggest and best of all abilities playground parks in the Northwest here, so we're, should be something to be really proud of. And along with McCormick Park, we're doing some changes to try to get the work finished out there, that we have some grant funding for. I think I said McCormick Park, I meant Campbell Park. Along with facilities and we talked today, earlier today about the importance of the new public safety facility and install the work we're doing on the waterfront to advance that. And when I talk about waterfront, the waterfront redevelopment project, it's really a sum of its parts. It's such a big project that it has so many subparts, you really have to take it in bites. And the veneer property, which is, you know, the former veneer mill site adjacent to the river, we've been working on that for several years. Councillors, I'm glad that the new councillors have been a part of the process. Request for qualifications for the contractor or the consultant selection, and got some really good consultants. Work a little bit more on that next week, the January 13th interviews, and have something to talk about at the January 20th meeting. And that work is, you know, you know, how that's possible has been on the back of a lot of work preceding it through the formation of Urban Real Estate Agency, the grants we've been securing and continuing to explore. And this, this securing funding for the longer term in the project. So when I talk about the waterfront, talk about the veneer property, we're talking about the former Boise Mill Site, which is the rebranded to the St. Helens Industrial Business Park. And the third part of it is the Central Waterfront, which is exploring the repurposing of all of part of the city's wastewater. I'll talk about the, the Industrial Business Park. And we've worked to develop a framework plan, that framework plan, parcelation is complete. And thank to some, thanks to some funding from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. We have a, have a plan, it has a funding component that's also ready for your review. And we'll be doing that over the next, probably the first weekend, I think it's first meeting, February, February for sure. Presenting that to the council and hopefully you'll adopt it by a resolution of supporting it. And we've been talking about the RV park behind the rec center right there that was, it had various revisions. We have the latest one that, now that we have this road, new road alignment, I asked the contractor to finish his work and preserve that creek, trail along the creek. What we're talking about is about a seven acre bigger piece of property behind the rec center there. And for use as an RV park. And potential revenue stream for that, or could be any number of things, but it was talked about as being for the rec, rec center.
Yep.
But, so that site has a 20 foot trail along the river. It takes, moves closer to the road, and it's a better project all around, and it's, it's in work, it's not ready. We're still, still draft, we're still working on it, and we should be able to bring that to you fairly soon. Down at the mill site, there's also a grading component down there that we're working on, creating some building pads, attracting some create, I have a looking at this pretty unlevel, so we're looking at leveling some pads to attract economic development on site. And also we're, you know, continuing to monitor closely for the in-water remediation off the docks so that we'll continue to have maritime uses as part of our economic development strategy. So I'll quickly, there's a lot, so I try to go fairly quickly, but yeah, there are things you want to slow down and talk about either in the future, just so you know. So the city has a number of franchise agreements, we, last meeting we approved a franchise agreement. The franchise agreement is a license to do any business with the city, or rather than just they pay a license to use the city's rights and ways for a public benefit. So waste management, we had a, had an agreement with them last, last meeting, as far as Dropbox is Comcast. It's, we're still trying to get to S Comcast, it's been outstanding for some time. The Columbia River PUD franchise expired on December 31st, so we've staff continued to work, bring that forward with you. And also on the horizon is the Northwest Natural, these are typically 10-year agreements, so they seem to all kind of hit at the same time. Fairly short window here, they're not always as much attention to this, but over the next year, you'll be seeing a fair amount to do with franchises. We're, the memorandum of understanding for the relationship between the city and Shedco and St. Helens Economic Development Corporation is continuing to be refined. We have what we think is an acceptable agreement. We're going to take that back to Shedco to make sure that it's something they would sign before we bring it to you on the 20th to take, take a look at. I want to talk a little bit about dock usage, dock use regulations. We had a somewhat of a debacle at the Christmas ships where we, these transient boats come and don't leave, and they are not around, and they won't move. We tried to, we tried to improve the process, we've improved our regulations. I think there's, adjusting the regulations we have, I think there's some opportunity to, to refine a registration process, have some sort of two-part ticket that they have to post on their boat. Upgraded the signage for sure, the signage that are down there show every, the entire ordinance, I don't think that's necessarily appropriate. We need to be more simplified in our messaging to say that, you know, 14 days during 72 hours in a 14-day period is the current regulation. We'll be working to have a more clear regulations and also the enforcement side of that as well. Administratively, working, you know, keeping up with COVID, the public health mandates, the, all of the stuff coming out of the governor's office. Even the expenditure funding has been, been challenging to support small businesses and, you know, those community partners that we have around the community. But we're, we're doing fairly well with it and taking it very seriously. And lastly, you know, thanks, maybe not quite lastly, the communications effort here at the city is something that seems to be semi-insatiable. There's just more and more communications, it seems like every time we talk about something, somebody's hearing it for the first time. Things like the police station are probably going to be pretty exhausting and almost nauseous to talk about it so much to make sure that everybody knows what's just, just the, the need and, you know, the why, how overdue an investment like that really is. I'm looking forward to the council retreat on the 27th. Developing an agenda that I sent you out a, a draft agenda, and yeah, I think I'll leave it right there.
Yeah, that's all, it's a lot, and again, we'll be reviewing a ton of this stuff in our strategic action plan and for councillor Berkeley and Chilton. So, alright, I got another, other business.
I've got some.
Well, that kind of really works on our report for tonight.
We, we ought to get some of this right now. One of the things I'm going to propose tonight is an RFP for our Tourism Director. And also, John, last November was going to tell me how much rent we had collected from the Ortho Grow operation. He was going to do that, and I still haven't gotten that number. And this evening, I'm going to put a motion forward to end the sale of Ortho Grow. Because we've been going at this since 2017. They've been growing stuff and selling, and they haven't been paying us money. I think they haven't shown good faith, I think we've just got to kill that sale. So that's what I'm going to do this evening. What John just talked about, the number of projects, I think we need to get into a good, hard 20-year plan. Because we've got so many things that are starting to kind of get just slopped down. I think we've got to get a hard work plan for our next 20 years. So that's what I'm going to bring up this evening, thank you.
Councillor, councillor Topaz, I just want to acknowledge the fact that the Grow operation is paying the city, and you don't have the facts correct on that. So make certain that you have the facts correct. Make certain that you weigh in with Mr. Matt Brown, our finance person, and John Walsh before you put those facts out.
I'm waiting for the rent that we should be owed according to their schedule.
The sale of, the sale of the property is already completed, councillor Topaz.
It has not been registered. I talked to the legal firm or legal department, and they say until it's been recorded, no sale has been done. Has it been recorded in the county office? Has it, yes or no?
As far as I know, it has been, yeah, September 2nd was the date that we transferred.
Yep.
And they've been
And they've been paying the rent, they've paid $365,000.
It's not a rent payment anymore, it's a lease payment.
Order, order, hey, I just want to remind councillor Topaz that this was an action item for the entire council, and it was a purchase agreement and a sell agreement that maybe you were against at the time, I don't recall your vote. But that has been months ago, and you know the property has been sold, and we agreed to sell it, and now you are bringing now, wait a minute, wait a minute, councillor Topaz, you're out of order, I'm speaking. Now, John Walsh just talked about a slew of things that we are trying to do as a city. And you continue to bring this, excuse my French, this distracting items, and I will change my French. To this entire council, and try to distract us from what we're really trying to do, is move a city forward. And I've had just about enough of it, and you know it. Now, okay, we will be going into executive session under ORS 1926602E and H. Real Property and Consulting with Council, we are adjourned. Hang on, council, that means the rest of you, hang on, we're gonna be going into executive session.